Good morning. My name is Holly Herrera. I am the board administrator for today's work session, Thursday, March 7, 2024. This meeting is being recorded. Chair Stevens, we are ready to begin.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm just trying to pull up my agenda here. All right. Okay, this is a work session for the board with the agency staff. Attendees from the public are welcome to observe. The chat function as well as the attendee cameras and microphones will be turned off. If you would like to submit public comment, please do that through the website for our April 4, 2024 board meeting. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Holly, for a roll call.
So Chair Catherine Stevens.
Present.
Sarah Lucas.
President.
Steve Maye. You may be showing us a little bit late. Bill Brock.
Here.
And Tim Knight.
Here, in the nick of time.
And then Jeff Pritchard. I don't see Jeff coming in yet. So our role call is complete.
Okay, thank you. This work session, we asked staff to bring back a presentation about planning and projects and how that process works through O D A B. And so, Mr. Thomas, take it away.
Good morning, and thank you. Let me see if I can share the screen here. Okay. So yeah, good morning. Thank you for everyone for being here. And I will start with the planning programs presentation, and this is the first one I've done for the board. So I did try to keep it pretty succinct. Please let me know if there's anything missing, any questions, anything along the slides here, and I'll answer the best I can, or I will follow up with an email. So so the planning programs here at the Department of Aviation are quite extensive. These are most, but not all. So we have our planning and land use, of course, which includes our tall structure review in Oregon Aviation Plan. We have our payment evaluation program, which the evaluation reports from that eventually goes into our payment maintenance program throughout the state. And I'll go into a little bit more detail on each of these as we move along. We have our statewide capital improvement program, our FAA airport improvement programs, or A I P projects. And then we have our ASAP grant program, so Corr and SOAR. We used to have a program called ROAR for rural airports, but that is no longer. And more recently, and something we're currently in transition on, is our procurement and contract. So in the past, we have been the contract administration for our projects. We are now in the process of moving procurement into the agency as well. And our same goes with our administrative rules. So in the past, ODOT provided our coordination of our O A Rs. And that's transitioning back, or actually, I guess, has transitioned back to the Department of Aviation here a couple of months ago. Connect Organ Coordination, and then Legislative Government and External Relations. And something that's not on here, but it is something that myself and Kenji have been spending a lot of time on, is our, you know, A A M and U A S, or Advanced Aviation. And we don't quite have, you know, an official position or person for that. So that's kind of something that Kenji and I are taking lead on. And here's some general planning updates. So some of you may have seen this. If you attended O W A M, I don't know if there was anybody on the board that did this time around. But so we've had a couple of revisions of our planning program area position. So in the past, or what was that?
I was just saying Jeff Richards is now.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, in the past, we had our ASAP programs, we had two grant coordinators that they're, they were almost entirely 100% focused on the ASAP grants. And we have recently modified one of those positions to include the Payment Maintenance and Payment Evaluation Program Coordination roles. And that is something that Andrea has currently recently moved into. And then what the other position has been modified to include procurement and contract administration. So here on the right-hand side of the slide, you can kind of see, you know, general breakdown of what each of these positions do. So our two coordinators are planner Brandon Pike and then myself. Land use and tall structure. So this is something that Brandon and I do, primarily Brandon at the moment. He is the expert on our land use and tall structure review. So Airport Planning and Land Use for State-Owned Airports and Coordination with all 97 Public Use Airports within Oregon, which includes land use compatibility requirements and an airspace analysis when building or modifying structures in or near airports to provide airspace safety. Continue. Something that Brandon and I have recently joined in the past couple of months here is the Department of Land Conservation and Development, or E L C D, has initiated and led a multi-state agency land use network, which basically gets together, ideally, all of the land use staff and representation from different agencies across the state. And so that is currently led by D L C D, along with the Department of Agriculture. And they're working to ensure alignment and consistency for land use policy. What was that? Working together to ensure alignment and consistency for land use policy across the state. Our first meeting was back in December 12, 2023. Our next meeting is actually next Tuesday, March 12. The Payment Evaluation Program, or P E P, evaluates payment conditions at public use N I P S airports by region on a rotational cycle. So the data from these P E P reporting is then used in the Payment Maintenance Program, or P N P, to plan and execute projects as applicable across the state throughout those regions. And for your reference, in 2023, there was quite a few P E P reports that were done. And here's just, you know, a list of all of the airports that those were done at. And if anybody would like to see, you know, the individual reports, just please feel free to reach out to myself or Andrea, and we can email the reports as requested. Maintenance Program, P N P. So P N P evaluates reports that were provided by P E P to establish a payment maintenance schedule across the state. We then process procurement contracts, executing those projects to provide the maintenance needs by region. On the schedule for this year is Region 3 and 4, which is more or less kind of central and northeast and eastern Oregon. And those will be, we've, those will be happening here in the spring and summer. So those should be completed by the end of the summer, early fall. And we are working with our engineers to get the Region 1 inspections scheduled before the end of the year as well. Or Program Overview, or ASAP, I should, that should have been titled. The Aviation System Action Program ASAP was created by House Bill 2075, which was a bill in 2015, and included COR, SOAR, and ROAR. In 2021, House Bill 2434 made COR and SOAR permanent and closed the ROAR program. COR grant funding is applicable toward airport improvement-related projects at Oregon's 97 public use airports, and SOAR-specific toward our state-owned and operated airport improvement projects. So the grant, the COR grant cycle timeline, you see the grant applications that generally happens in the fall, kind of October, November. We then have an internal review and A C T, or the Aviation Committee on Transportation Outreach, ARC review and scoring, ARC meetings, and recommendations to the Aviation Board. And then the board reviews and awards. And then finally, the award notification. And so currently where we're at in our last, our most recent cycle is that the board has reviewed and selected which grants are awarded, and we have notified the grantees that their, their grants are available to execute as, as they need to. And so we've had about four that have executed. And that still leaves us with, you know, quite a few that are still on the schedule to happen over the next few months here. Some general, recent core updates. So in the past, our amendments had quite a bit of back and forth. When an amendment was needed for a grant, we've removed the change order request form that, that saves the grantees and O D A B staff to several steps, you know, back and forth communication via email. We have updated our milestone progress reports, or our M P Rs, on our current, most recent cycle to limit the grants to only four M P Rs. So each one, as you see on the screen, would be 25, 50, 75, and 100. And then we could add an additional M P R if it is an FAA project to confirm that we have received all the FAA documentation. And we did this just because in the past, we'd had several grants that had had, you know, upwards of 15, 16 milestones. And the way that our, our rules are currently listed is anytime a single milestone is near or past its estimated completion date, it would require an amendment. So this just helps, you know, with a lot of the kind of the busy work that grantees and O D A B staff are having to do to do probably excessive amendments when we just limit this down. This saves everybody a lot of time. And the notices that go out to our grantees now include due dates and progression percentages. It's just a useful or, you know, nice reference point to have. And we have been working on trying to streamline our grant execution in a timely manner. So we've had some, you know, grants that maybe are awarded, and it's three, six months out, and they still have not been executed. And or we have a grant that had been executed, but there wasn't any noticeable progress after a few months. So we're working on how to best, you know, stay on top of that and streamline that and being more consistent and on, you know, if there's no progress within a certain amount of time, we will be reaching out to the grantee to see whether or not it's appropriate to close the grant. And then for our future grants, we are looking at revision to the ARC process to match something that's more similar to how actually Connect Organ does it now, to where the grantees would have an opportunity to present their project to the ARC cohorts. Don't know exactly what that'll look like yet. Maybe it'll be something limited to 90 seconds or two minutes or three minutes. But the grantees then could, could have that opportunity to, to have a presentation and talk about the importance of their project and, and why they feel that it should have, you know, a priority on the list. Our administrative rules for O A R. Something else that we're working on quite extensively here in our ASAP team, and this has turned out to be a little bit larger of a, a project than we had initially anticipated. But so our O A Rs, Chapter 738, they have transitioned from our, from the Oregon Department of Transportation to, to us, the Department of Aviation. And we are reviewing 738-124, which is the ASAP rule section or division, reviewing that along with the Department of Justice to provide clarification and simplification of our program rules. And we will be reaching out to the board and really other interested parties on setting up a rules advisory committee, you know, before anything is, is permanent, of course. We're working on providing a draft. So we'll, we'll have a good foundation to start on. Procurement Contract Administration. So again, our procurement contract administration is currently in the process of transitioning from ODOT to, to the Department of Aviation. We had initially planned that transition to happen April 1. But I think just because of the, you know, the turnaround time scheduling, we've recently had our full team again. Will likely need to extend that by about three months. We have that agreement on a, on a quarterly basis with ODOT. And as we have been working through this transition, there was an agreement that if we needed to extend that, we could. We just want to ensure that we have, of course, all of the training and adequate certification and whatnot to best, to best have ourselves set up for a good starting point, a good foundation when that does come back in-house. And that provides an opportunity for quicker turnaround time for our projects, direct line of communication, you know, internally with our own team, and direct line when we're working with our contractors and engineers. Legislative. So currently, the only thing we had in this last legislative session was a pretty minor statutory amendment request. Current, our current statute limits our ASAP grants to only, for Priority 1 ASAP grants, to only be applicable towards FAA I P or Airport Improvement Project Grants. As many of you know, airports have also had access to B I L grants, and the FAA could potentially have other grant opportunities in the future. And so we, we requested that, that statute, instead of saying FAA I P, it is just FAA grant. So it would still be limited to FAA. Not all federal, just FAA only, and any other grants that the FAA may offer to airport-specific projects in the future. And any questions? That is it. Did I cover everything that everybody was looking for?
Yeah, I think so. Thanks, Alex. That was informative. And maybe you can tell us kind of, that's a lot of program areas. So maybe you can tell us kind of how the team works together to keep on top of all that, because it is quite a lot to track on.
It is, it is quite a lot. And several of these kind of new program areas, like the procurement contracting and the administrative rules, is fairly new. I am, you know, we are very fortunate to where we have a great team. We do recently have, recently have filled our entire team. We're back to a full team between Andrea, Ernie, Brandon, and myself. And it is a lot of work, but it is something that, you know, Director Kenji Sugahara, one of his primary goals when he started was really focusing on how to streamline some of our processes. And that's something that, that we've been really working on, on just how, how to keep our calendars and how to keep our to-do lists and our tasks and everything. What are the priorities and how to really focus on just making sure we get things done in a timely manner. And it's, yeah. I, I feel like we're, I'm confident that we are, we are staying on top of all these things. It is a lot. It has been a lot of training and, and you know, internal meetings and whatnot over the past several months. But I'm confident moving forward that once some of these things transition in-house, well, we have a great team and we'll be, we'll have a strong foundation.
Well, and I know, I can tell the difference in the, the core grant program process. It's definitely been streamlined, and this is easier, user-friendly for the airports who are applying for those grants. So I appreciate that.
Chair Steven, I'd just like to add, I like the idea in the future of opportunities for grant for those seeking grants to be able to do their presentation. I think you're right, keeping it short, but that may help the ARCs quite a bit there with their decision-making and give, give us some better recommendations in the long run. So I like that change that you all are proposing.
Thank you. Good to hear.
Alex, I just wanted to add in also, it's really great to see the open communication with D L C D. And I'm glad to see that you guys will be having regular meetings with them, and that's just going to help your department in so many ways. So thank you for making that a priority and taking that initiative.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I will request since nobody else is speaking up, I was looking through the lovely website, and I don't see an update with the new P E P, P N P, where it's been shifted from three regions into four. And so if that is something I personally like, so if you could email that out to us, board members, but also perhaps get a map up on the website, just because with that shift, it's hard to remember who's in which group now.
Okay, yeah, Andrea, I can reach out to you and follow up with that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Kenji, I don't know if you have any thoughts on the streamlining efforts, but it seems to be effective.
Yeah, it's a, the transition to, well, thank you, Chair Stevens. The, the transition time is going to take a little bit, because of course, as Alex mentioned, there is a training period. And one of the things that we want to make sure is that there, there have been issues in the past with, with procurement and contracting when we did have it in-house, and we want to make sure that we put in the right controls to make sure that things don't go sideways on us. So it's, it's just slowly getting into it, making sure that we have the support from ODOT when it's needed, right? Because it is new. It is something that we're, we're trying out. And if it, if it works, it's going to end up with significant money savings, so budget savings, as well as decreasing the time for a lot of execution, in essence. Because for a lot of the contracting pieces, we put it out to ODOT. In comparison to some of the large projects you see over at the ODOT, ours are tiny. So they tend to drop down toward the bottom of the bucket, which is problematic for us, because, well, we, we need to execute on these things. And so there, there's a lot of benefits to it, but we want to make sure that we go about it the right way. And Alex and his team have shown the willingness, and I think that the ability to, to really execute on all the program areas that you see right there. Alex and I come from the same mold in terms of we are very efficiency motivated, as well, at the same time, making sure that we're following all the regulatory requirements as well. So I'm confident, and I, you're going to see the way that the agency operates changes over time to make it easier, more customer-centric, and more pleasant experience as well. So thank you.
All right, very good. Any other questions, comments? I know we had, initially, we had some other items on this work session, but we postponed those just to cancel, not available to do some of our required trainings and that kind of thing. So, so it may be a very short meeting, unless anybody has any other questions or comments. Go ahead, Jim.
I just want to tell Alex, thank you very much for taking such complicated, complex issues and really bringing it back to this board in a concise manner that really does make sense. And, you know, you don't, you don't prolong the misery on going into the details. So I really appreciate that.
No problem.
Just one comment from my, for me. I had the opportunity to accompany Kenji and Alex last week to DC for the Niseo Legislative Conference and Meetings. It was a great opportunity. I don't know, in future years, if other board members want to go. I don't think there were many other agencies that had brought along their board, a board member. So it was actually really nice to see the conversation and discussion. We certainly had a great presentation from the Associate Administrator for Airports from the FAA to kind of get Shinetta's perspective on the role that state aviation has and her priorities. It was great to hear about a few programs that many of us are concerned about, whether we talk about, you know, E V toll in the future there. Certainly, some of the planning associated with that, some of the other things like the Eagle Program and FAA's march towards unlighted aviation fuels, towards the concerns about PFAS and chemical, and the switch out for airports for firefighting foam. So it was really great. And to see the other states kind of, and look at aviation from the state perspective and level of priorities. Everybody has their perspective, whether you're from a large airport, small airport consultant, some other part of the aviation industry, but to see it from the broader perspective of the states and their directors was really great. So thank you for the invite. I had a great time and a great group of speakers, and Niseo is a great organization there.
I wanted to add, I did post some photos that Kenji took from Niseo, and Steven, maybe you're in that, along with Alex and Kenji. And thank you for that. I posted on our Instagram, which our Instagram account is OR Aviation. You guys want to check that out?
Yep, Chair Stevens, if I could make a mention real quick. Holly has restarted our social media presence, so you'll start seeing more, more pictures, more communication coming out from those channels as well. So it'll be accessible to a larger audience than we traditionally have through GovDelivery and just our website. So I don't think we're going to be able to use TikTok because it's banned, but.
We, we won't be able to use TikTok.
But, but we can use Snapchat, though, right?
We're waiting for that to be approved. Yes. So we can join all different age groups.
I think we're good not, not using TikTok.
Jeff has a question.
Go ahead.
Yes, good morning, Chair Stevens. Curious to know, Kenji, are you going to have a, are we going to have a presence on LinkedIn for O D A B? In terms of how that's sort of a professional environment? Is that being looked at, or are there just so many options? We're going to just stick to one or two?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. Holly, if you want to look into it, LinkedIn's a great place to have an organization page. So we can do that. And if you need help, just let me know. Yep.
I was looking into that and with Kristen, and it looks like we have our LinkedIn, but we're just trying to figure out the username, password. It has been years, I guess. So the last person who probably has that login, the email is probably no longer valid. And so we're going to try to just have them delete it as a duplicate and start all over. But yes, I was looking into LinkedIn. I'll keep you guys updated. Thank you.
One thing I did want to mention before the end is we had, we had the opportunity to meet with Administrator Whitaker of the FAA as well. So that was a fantastic opportunity. Steve, unfortunately, you weren't be able to make that, that portion of the Niseo conference. But I definitely would like to take more board members along. I know this fall, the, the organization is thinking of having a track for board members. So that might create an opportunity. As well as they're creating new membership type for airports that they're slowly rolling out. They have taken on a couple of states, but they're, they're also looking at other states as well. So that, it's a very valuable resource in terms of they track the federal legislation, as well as things that are going up on the hill, and they provide a newsletter. So it's a great opportunity for, for smaller airports to get involved, and larger airports as well, just to get, to supplement some of the information avenues that, that folks have. So yeah, thank you.
Hey, very good. I was just going to let folks know. So it looks like we're getting close to an FAA extension. So that's good. Sending, being sent to the White House for a signature. That makes all of our lives a whole lot easier. And then the mini-bus also looks like it is progressing. So that's FAA reauthorization, not just an extension. So fingers crossed that we will actually get that action taken as well. Any other questions, comments? Any other questions, comments? Otherwise, we'll give you some time back in your day. All right. Thank you so much. I appreciate all of your efforts, Alex, Kenji, staff. So and we will see everybody for the next or meeting that will be April 4th, held at the Independence State Airport.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Do you all have?
Have a good rest of your week, everybody.
This is meeting then adjourned.
Yes. There you go, Holly. Thanks for keeping us honest.
Thank you for the record. Thank you. This meeting recording has ended.